Fagan Public Information Officer, welcome to the Township Council meeting for November 22nd, 2022. At this point, I will turn it over to Council President Susan McCartney.
Good evening. Thank you, Joe. Madam Clerk, I'm going to turn it over to Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams, is she on the call?
She is on the call, yes.
So, Woman Williams, please unmute yourself.
I am unmuted and present. Thank you. Fall again from Paris.
Thank you. Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you can, if you like. She looks comfortable. Well, first, I want to say thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just going to say thank you. Thank you to the community, really, for the support in this recent election. I appreciate the votes of confidence. And I want to thank my mayoral candidates, commend them for the campaigns that everyone ran and for stepping up, and also their campaign volunteers. I felt like everyone stayed in their lanes, everyone did what we had to do to get across the finish line. And I also see one of our council elect here. We do have seats reserved here in the front if you would like to come forward. Thank you, the West Orange community, for coming out to vote. The first thing on our conference agenda is a proclamation from the mayor's office about National Injury Prevention Month. This is, whereas injuries are the leading cause of death and disability to United States children ages 1 to 18, the township of West Orange is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and well-being of all of our children. An estimated 54% of gun owners don't lock all of their guns securely, and it is estimated that 4.6 million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded gun. Almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else. Research shows that the best way to protect children and teens from accessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices. Protecting public safety in our communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. Hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to their crucial role in reducing injuries and deaths by promoting safe practices. National Injury Prevention Day raises awareness and promotes efforts to reduce injuries among children. The township of West Orange commends the Be Smart program developed by every town for Gun Safety Support Fund, and Moms Demand Action, and all involved in their endeavor to protect children from injury. And the mayor designated November 18th to be National Injury Prevention Day. And the Be Smart program is an acronym. The S stands for Secure All Guns in Homes and Vehicles. The M is Model Appropriate Behavior. The A, Ask About Unsecured Guns in Others Homes. R stands for Recognizing the Role of Guns in Suicide. And T, Tell Others to Be Smart and Follow This Program. So, we thank you. I'm sorry, the person that had requested this proclamation was not able to attend tonight's meeting, so I did say that I would read that into our record. Madam Clerk, I know that you have council meeting dates?
Yes.
That were distributed. If anyone has any conflicts or changes, speak up.
Speak up.
I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
No?
I don't think when the calendar was distributed, we had the first meeting of the year. I think the first meeting is listed as January 10th. So, can we add the first meeting, whether that'll be installation or?
Well, you'll have to have an additional meeting just to make the selections for the January 1st swearing-in. And then, that could be the only business, but you're going to have to do that, but you'd have to add that.
Thank you.
What do you mean, appointments and?
Well, if you're going to have a ceremony, a swearing-in ceremony on January 1st, whatever positions you're going to swear in that day, you'll have to have a meeting to make those appointments, to vote on those.
If it's not done at home on January 1st, it's a Sunday.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's at home, because it's a Sunday. We get sworn in over the following on January 1st.
Yeah, but this is different.
You have to have a meeting. It could be a two-minute meeting, it could be, you know, a five-minute meeting.
Can't it be done at the inauguration itself?
The inauguration, but you'll have to, it can't be done at the inauguration, but you'll have to hold a meeting. You'll have to open a meeting.
So, can a meeting be held the end of December?
To vote for council president, you know, whatever appointments you're going to make. If you're going to make any appointments other than the election, if you're just doing the election.
We always do that, the first meeting in January.
Yes, but since this is a different-
It all is dependent on what you plan to do at the ceremonial meeting on January 1st.
Well, there is no meeting here.
There's going to be one this year.
On January 1st, on a Sunday, you're going to bring staff in on Sunday, January 1st?
The administration, the inauguration, it's going to be a ceremony. Yeah.
So, you're going to bring staff in on Jan, you're going to make staff come in on January 1st on a Sunday?
I mean, that's-
We never did that before. Why would you?
I don't, yeah. Are we doing that?
Well, if I can, it's not never.
Please.
Last time, it was done in 2010.
Right. A long time ago, it was done. And traditionally, and many towns do it every year that they have newly elected officials. We have not done it in recent years, and I guess since 2010, and that's, the council has just chosen that that's when?
No, that was the mayor's choice.
Okay.
Yeah. Not to do it. Not to have, you know. Well, because it costs money to bring in staff on a Sunday.
Well, does it have to be done on the Sunday? Can it not be done on the Monday?
Yeah. Why don't you do January 2nd?
Well, I think the Monday's a holiday as well, isn't it?
It is a holiday, but it's a Monday. I mean, people are off at work.
Whatever day, first off, there's no, we won't be paying staff to come in. Anybody, any staff that comes in, comes in on their own. Because there's no, there's, you know, any of the staff that you'd have to worry about paying anyway, because you're coming in on their own. If you choose to have the swearing-in at any other day other than the first meeting, you can do to do that, choose to do that. And at that meeting, if you're just going to be swearing in the new council people and the new mayor, then that's fine. If you're going to be also intending to swear in other officials, those would have to be appointed at a meeting of the government body once it's constituted.
So, can that happen on Monday, the 2nd?
It can happen anytime you want.
Just if we're closed on the 2nd, again, you run into time and a half.
There's no, we're not paying any employees to come. That won't be an issue.
So, you're opening the door?
We always do.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
I think I would prefer the Monday than the Sunday, you know, the day after, New Year's Eve.
What we have always done in the past is Karen swears everybody in on, you know, January 1st at 12:01 a.m. or whatever.
Right. And that's a phone call, right. But if we're going to have a meeting, you know.
And I think you would want people here, people, especially if Monday's a holiday, you're going to get people that are going to be gone all weekend, and you won't get a, you know, people, you want people to come. It's a nice event. Our first woman mayor, it's a nice event, so.
Well, I know there have been some discussions. I haven't met with the mayor-elect yet on this, but I know there's been some discussions about having a ceremony and where it might take place. So, I don't think those details have been washed out yet. And your concern about where is important, because there will be a lot of people that want to come.
Yeah, you want people, yeah.
It probably won't be here. It probably will have to be somewhere-
Yeah, you want to get a good crowd.
Somewhere where more people could be handled.
Then I think I would like to move it to the Monday, just because of that weekend and traveling, and that's okay. Okay. To be determined.
Excuse me, Council President. So, does that mean on, we'll save the appointments and what we usually do for the first council meeting in here?
Now, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we be able to have a brief meeting, less than five minutes, to go over the list of the appointments as well as council president, and do the installation of our next council president, our next mayor, and our council members-elect at the same time? I think all of that is going to be ceremonial, no matter what. We have a new mayor.
Well, it usually isn't, and I think the idea is not, like, it's a holiday week, like, end of the holiday week. And, I mean, I know I'll be away then, and you may not get all of us to vote on it, so that could be a problem, too.
Okay. So, apparently, we're going to plan this ahead.
Yeah.
At least have the second.
And then, we'll work on an agenda, and then, you know, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
We have two more meetings till the end of the year. We'll work that out.
Good. Can you confirm the other dates, though, because I need to get those to share?
I was okay with the other dates. If anyone else has a conflict with any of the other dates?
Council President, if I may, 8:15 is difficult for me. Can we do it either the first or the last week of August? It's, it could either be the first, actually, even if it had to be the 8th, that would be better, but ideally, the first or the 22nd.
Generally, August earlier is better than later.
So, the 8th or the 1st?
I'm okay with the 8th.
Yeah, the 8th.
I'm okay. Councilwoman Williams, does August 8th work for you if we move?
I'm usually away the second week of August at Martha's Vineyard, so I would like to not do another meeting by phone.
Okay. The 1st? August 1st? Bill, August 1st was okay?
August 1st or the 8th are fine.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams, how about the 1st?
The 1st will work.
Okay. There you go.
Works for me.
The 18th, then you're going to do it two weeks later, and then you're not going to have another one.
Can you back the 18th up to the 11th?
No, no, it's okay.
Which one, August 1st?
It's fine. I can be with you people on my birthday.
You don't want to be here on your birthday, not in the middle of July. Can we move to July 18th?
It's okay. It's okay, Council. I'm good.
It's her birthday. She doesn't want to make a big deal out of it, but-
It's okay. It's okay.
Well, it's hard, because you have-
I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah, you have the 4th of July, then you have-
The 11th.
You could buy me a cupcake. It would be great.
Bring you cupcakes.
We've had one meeting in July, too. That's all we have.
You only have one in July?
One in July.
It's fine.
So, there's the 4th of July.
I usually, I usually go away the week before, so that's fine.
Are you going to be away that week?
I'm fine. I have no plans yet. It's fine.
As I say, since we're moving, if we move the August earlier-
Right.
You might as, if you move back to the 11th.
We can move until the 11th. It's fine.
Oh, you'll be away on the 11th?
No, I have no plans yet, so I'm good.
All right. So, you just want to leave it on the 18th?
It doesn't matter. It's up to you guys.
I can move.
I can move, too.
All right.
So, let's do the 11th on July.
Councilwoman Williams?
Councilwoman Williams?
That's fine. Thank you.
There we go.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, did our two new council persons coming on, do they, do they get a chance to look at this or no?
Nope. It is what it is.
Yeah.
And you know what? Going down the line, if we have to change it, we can always amend it, so that's not a problem.
That's true.
Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the calendar as amended?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Motion accepted. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Council Liaison announcements, we have a couple minutes left.
Sure. I could start. And I just want to congratulate everybody again. I mean, all of you did such a great job campaigning and getting issues out, and just, you know, just the dialogue that was within the community. I know how hard it is for all candidates to go out there and put yourselves and your families out there. And I just want to thank all of you for doing that, because I know you all care about the township, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And congratulations to all.
Beautiful, yes.
So, December 3rd is quickly approaching us, and I know Mr. Fagan's going to have our holiday character breakfast on December 3rd at Washington School from 9:00 to 4:00. Reservations are required. Children under 2 are free, and it's 7 for children and 10 for adults. Always a great event. Benji's Mexican Grill comes with a beautiful, beautiful photo booth that they take pictures of all the kids that come with their families, and it's become, it's become quite the tradition that the children come to take their picture with Santa, and the families look forward to it. In the gym at Washington School, there's going to be craft vendors this year. We haven't done that in a while because of COVID, so we're excited to bring our craft vendors back. And some activities for the kids, and of course, our very own Joe Fagan, our historian, will talk to the kids, be on hand, talk to the public as well. And the library has their event at 2:00 p.m., 2:00 to 3:00 with the stuffed animals, so you have to reserve ahead. So, the trolley rides will be available this year. I hope my colleagues, you're available to narrate and just respond back to Ms. Brill. Our commissioners will all be out, so it's a great event. We're excited for it. And at night, of course, the old-fashioned tree lighting produced by the Recreation Department, so we want to thank all involved for all their hard work. And I attended the Veterans Day Celebration, and what a beautiful event, although it was quite rainy this year. But thank you to Joe Brennan and Sherri Quirk for putting that together this year. It's always an honor to recognize our veterans, and the ceremony did not disappoint. There will be a menorah lighting December 20th, I believe, in Town Hall, 4:00 p.m., so we look forward to that event as well. I'd like to, my Board of Liaison appointments, I'd like to congratulate Oscar Guera, our new high school principal, starting yesterday at West Orange High School. So, we're very excited to welcome him aboard, and good luck to him and Mr. Moore as he moves forward to get ready to be our new superintendent in the district. A great fall season this year with our high school sports. It's been a banner year that Mr. Fagan will talk about in a minute or two when he is up. But I just had to add, it's, you know, being involved in athletics for so long in the district and in the town, it really was a remarkable year. And to come on, to recognize that, the mayor has been working with the school district, and there was a little meeting the other day, and we'll be recognizing all the athletes. We usually bring them into township chambers, but there's still many, so many this year that we're going to do a big celebration, so I look forward to that. And our Public Relations Commission, they've been very busy planning Restaurant Week in March this year, and we're going to bring back the real at our open house as well. So, we look forward to that. And I want to thank them for all their hard work in promoting our West Orange Downtown app. And if you haven't downloaded it yet, please do so, so you'll be able to get all of everything township on there. We want everybody to be mobile. And last but not least, Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday, recognized by American Express, and we always recognize it here in the township. Please go out and support our local small business owners. It's been a tough couple of years. This year's no different. Our local restaurants, so the holidays are approaching. If you could support them, they'll be very grateful, and we appreciate all that they do for our community. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. And I, too, would like to take this opportunity to congratulate council, I'm sorry, mayor-elect, Council President McCartney, on being the first woman mayor of West Orange. I am very happy that we get to celebrate a first with you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of your commitment and service throughout the years for the township. And I have to say in all sincerity that I am very supportive. I am here to make sure that we all work together to move us forward.
Thank you.
Your success is our success, so congratulations. And congratulations, Councilwoman Elect Scarpa, for all of your hard work as well. Good to see you. I did want to just briefly say, I don't really have, and I wanted to give an update, because I do see Mr. Gibbs here, as, here with respect to the cannabis. The Cannabis Task Force has not met since we last spoke for a number of reasons. Primarily, it is a holiday season. It was election season, and I know that there was some correspondence received from Mr. Gibbs and also his attorney. And the task force has decided to review your application, but considering that we have a new administration that will be sworn in, we're going to have conversations as to next steps for the task force with council, I'm sorry, mayor-elect, Susan McCartney. So, just wanted to let you know that. I know that you're here for that. And for anyone else who's listening, the task force did decide, and the council did support by resolution during our last meeting, that we were no longer accepting micro-business applications or just your traditional applications until we hear back from the state with respect to all of the other applications that have been supported. Just so that the public is aware, West Orange Wellness was one of the first applications that was approved. It is a dispensary. It was approved by the state, and they have gone before the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has also approved their application. So, now their next step is to go to the state to have their conditional license converted. So, there's still a lot of work in that regard. There's a lot of steps that have to take place before someone can open a cannabis business in town. And so, we're very excited that at least they've gotten through some of our processes, but then they'll come back to the township for their final approval. But we're well on our way. I'm very excited. Congratulations to the owners of West Orange Wellness, and I'm happy to say that when the task force was charged, they were charged to make sure that we're looking at the social justice and equity piece of the legislation. West Orange Wellness has two women partner. One is a former resident of West Orange who now lives in South Orange. She's a white woman. Her best friend from childhood is an African-American woman. And their third partner is a vet who has had, unfortunately, some challenges as a result of his service and some addictions. But happy to see that we were able to target all of those targeted communities, as is the spirit of the legislation. So, I will say that the task force will not meet again until, I'm going to keep saying this, Congress.
No, new task force.
Our new administration is installed. And that's it for me, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words and your own commitment and willingness to serve, and we can mobilize together. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. As has already been stated, congratulations on your hard-fought win in the last election. I'm excited to help you in the next two years move the township forward. I think where I will disagree with you is that everyone stayed in their lanes. Obviously, they did not. There was plenty of nasty politics, and I think that's a shame. I think it's a major disappointment. I think we can do better. And I think if West Orange is going to be the best she can be, we're going to have to decide these kinds of things on the merits and not on nasty politics. But you did not engage in that, and I do appreciate that and respect that. So, you can count me as an ally in moving the township forward, and I look forward to the next two years. I don't have a liaison report other than to say this is the holiday season, so I wish everyone a happy and joy and love and peace-filled holiday season. And I recognize one thing I forgot to say. So, that concludes that thought. I think it's important that we have a moment of silence for the victims of the nightclub shooting, as well as those folks from UVA. You know, politics had a role in those shootings. The rhetoric, the vitriolic nature of our politics, the winner-take-all nature of politics on every single level has real-life consequences. And there are now families that are trying to figure out what to do next, because a loved one was taken for no other reason than just being who they were. So, I do think it's important, before we move out of this portion of our meeting, to just have a quick moment of silence and acknowledgement and recognition of the terrible tragedy we've suffered in both of those mass shootings. And I think it's an opportunity for us to do some soul-searching and figure out what else we can do to make sure that we don't have that kind of stuff happen here. So, with your permission-
Absolutely.
Let us have a moment of silence.
Hmm.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Difficult to follow, but there are things going on in town. Thank you, Councilmen, for that. I would invite everyone to visit the westorangearts.org for the small works exhibit that is going on. Everything is really extraordinary. We had a beautiful reception on Sunday. I just invite you to visit 551 Valley Road, West Orange Arts Gallery and Gift Shop. I want to thank the community, our 20-foot, the West Orange Environmental Commission. The 20-foot trailer is finally empty, but thanks to everyone donating their plastic toys. We have partnered with Second Chance Toys. We sorted and disinfected, our volunteers sorted and disinfected all of the toys that have been donated, and they were carted off to a charitable organization. And I appreciate all of that, just before the holidays. Some of the stuff look brand-new. So, thank you, everyone. I thank DPW for coming out and helping transportation, opening the trailer, and our volunteers. And good news at the Rent a House, we have bingo on Wednesdays at noon, and we have, I have the IT department going over to install another computer in their library. So, kind of buckling down for the winter. And the Chamber, Chamber Luncheon is tomorrow afternoon, kind of short notice, but the Chamber Luncheon in conjunction with the Rotary Club, Lions Club, and Unico. This is an annual luncheon. Everyone is invited. That's Wilstra Grant. I didn't know if we had a picture of that. That's at noon tomorrow. And Councilwoman Castellino mentioned the menorah lighting. We also have a ribbon-cutting for the new foodery on Eagle Rock Avenue. That will be at 9:00 on Sunday, December 18th. Grocery Center, there's a steady stream of people. I just met with the owners, new Chamber members, steady stream of people coming into shop. Nice selection of delicious food. Invite everyone to shop. Madam Clerk? Councilwoman Williams?
I know. It's funny when I'm not really specifically there. Thank you, Council President. The rent levelling board met. Can you hear me? Yes? You can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, but can you speak closer to the microphone?
I can do better than that. I can turn it up just a little bit so that you all can hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Excellent. Not a problem. All right. So, the rent levelling board met, and there was a resolution sent back from our council asking them to relook, review the recommendation that they had. They did that. They decided, identified that the criteria and the ordinance had not been met for the review. So, the resolution from the rent levelling board was to dismiss the applicant's inquiry case and have it, you know, if they are so willing to have it resubmitted. The Historic Preservation Commission also met, continuing to identify historical properties in West Orange- in West Orange. With a couple of properties, there've been some challenges communicating with the owners to make sure that the exterior facades of those facilities do remain true to their original nature. And we will probably have to have some support from either the zoning board or, and/or on the administration, just so that we can make sure that the businesses are aware of their roles and responsibilities when it comes to renovating or any exterior changes, that proper notice is given once we have identified and designated those properties as historic. The Municipal Alliance Commission also met last month to hold their second-quarter meeting, just talking about the things that they plan to do. So they're in the planning stages. Always lots of senior programs available, and their calendar is on the westorange.org website. Those are the liaison updates that I have. Thank you, Council President. Also, just before I go, just joining in, my council colleagues, as well as the Mayor-elect, congratulations. I'm glad that November 8th has come and gone. I think we've all gotten a tremendous amount of rest and reprieve, but certainly we look forward, again saluting West Orange forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can sign off now and enjoy your vacation.
I'm going to stay on for a little while. It's called commitment and dedication. Come on now.
We'll get through this agenda then.
Let's do.
Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Okay, first, public comment. Welcome, public information officer.
Good evening, Council President, council colleagues. This is, of course, my contact information. If any member of the public has anything that they'd like to contact me about or question, I can be reached at this email and phone number. As we are heading into the Thanksgiving holiday, I just want to remind everyone traveling on the road that October and November are the most active months for deer. You know, you think that we're all not going to have that problem, so just be cautious while driving, dawn or dusk for deer. Obviously, stay alert. And my experience has been where there's one deer, there's more deer. So if you see one deer, slow down and, and, and just be on the lookout. As was mentioned, the Thanksgiving Luncheon is tomorrow at the Wilkes-Barre Grand Hotel. And as Council President had mentioned, you can go at westorangechamber.org for tickets, information, and I'm sure sponsorships are still available if you so desire. Municipal offices will be closed, of course, for Thanksgiving and the day after. And November 27th, Sunday, Santa Claus is coming to town. I think that was the song. He'll be visiting all the schools, and the schedule is up there. And of course, this is also on our website, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Castellino, the Downtown Alliance and their events. And their website is downtownwestorange.com to, to look at. And you can also access them from westorange.org, the town website. Stuff the Truck Toy Event is coming up on Toy Drive, December 4th. West Orange Shop Right, One Rooney Circle. I don't think anyone needs the address. All items will be donated to Toys for Tots. Also, as was mentioned earlier, the Hometown Champions Celebration. This is more or less a save-a-date for Saturday, December 10th. Details are still being worked out, but it certainly will honor football, boys soccer, girls soccer, cross-country, marching band, cheerleading. There's a lot to celebrate for the Hometown Champions Celebration. This picture is from last year, of course, but the annual lighting of the Hanukkah menorah is scheduled for 12, December 20th, right here in front of Town Hall. And Council President, would you care to comment on this, this photo, please?
Sure. Last week was the League of Municipalities Convention in Atlantic City, and I had the pleasure of meeting Sheila Oliver, Lieutenant Governor, newly-elected person from Patterson, and our newly-elected county council members, Asmaric Ebermichael and Susan Scarpa. So we attended quite a few seminars.
And I have another photo there for you to comment on.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so I put West Orange on the map as a Sustainable Jersey Coordinator for the Mayor's Wellness Program.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Worth mentioning is that West Orange Police Officer Frank Romeo has retired. I'm not quite sure how he's been on the job, but he certainly was a beloved member of both the force and the community. And we also had another retirement last week, and Lenny Lepore.
We don't want to talk about that.
Engineer, town engineer, has retired after 43 years. I believe he began in October 1979. And it was a great celebration. Our former business minister, business administrator, excuse me, Jack Sayers was there, as was former Mayor John McKean, current Assemblyman. So it's, I believe, the first time in West Orange, well, not the first time in West Orange history, certainly the, in recent memory, where there are three mayors in, in the picture. As mentioned, my contact information is here. All this information is available on the website, westorange.org. And I would be remiss if I didn't conclude my report with, this is a monumental day in American history. For a generation, certainly for my generation, this marks a moment in time, a moment frozen in time, when President Kennedy was assassinated in Dallas on November 26, 1963. Fifty-nine years ago, much like December 7th would be for a generation, and even 9/11 for a current generation. And I might mention, in town, we have the, at the Rec Department, the John F. Kennedy Memorial Field House was dedicated in 1964 in his honor, and his portrait is also one of several presidents hanging in this room. Council President, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Joe. It's so hard to believe that it was 59 years ago. I remember as a small child, and my father packed my whole family up in the car, and we drove to Washington, DC, stayed in that line.
Not that anybody cares, but I was in first place.
Okay. Public comment? If anyone, please. Yes, ma'am? Welcome.
I had so many years to go to. He looked at that one. He knew when I said, I couldn't care for him. And as far as JFK goes, I was this close to him down the mosque theater when he ran first time. And I left my husband home with two babies. We almost got divorced, but I saw JFK. And like my grandson said, meanwhile, you're not a historian, you're the history. What could I tell you? Anyway, feels good, but be back. I'm using a written statement because it's, oh, sorry. Rosary Morelli Ralphro. And I had to commit this to printed because if the memory goes, every decade it gets worse, so prepare yourselves for that.
Every decade.
All right. Althea Tweetin was supposed to be here tonight, but she couldn't make it, and I'm going to speak on her behalf just briefly. I'm offering my congratulations to all of you who have won your election, enjoy it in good health.
Thank you.
And God bless you. Okay. As I said, I've been talking for Althea also. I qualified because, to speak on her behalf, because we're very passionate, both of us, about senior citizens. To begin, just for the curiosity sake, I don't know if anyone noticed something I did notice during the entire campaign, that one word that was repeated continually by all the speakers, it was seniors. I'm hoping that means that there will be more services and programs, along with a senior center and an advisory board under the winter's time in office. Senior issues are not unique to West Orange, they're worldwide. Some statistics I've read that there are approximately 15,000 baby boomers locally and worldwide who turn 65 every month. In 15 years, there'll be more 65-year-olds than 15-year-olds. I'll share briefly with you a fact. I recently became aware of this past Monday when I attended a farewell party given to the Director of Senior Services in Livingston, our neighboring town. She achieved an awesome record for her 11 years in office. The seniors were very visibly sad by her loss. It was a very emotional day. She was a valuable resource I used when I was doing my networking and research. The event was held in their senior center, which years ago was a small community hospital. There were at least 100 seniors there. Among them were a large number of war veterans dressed in their old uniform jackets and caps. I was impressed by the fact that I'm not fully aware of the number of veterans who are seniors. They, as well as their fellow seniors, spend a great amount of time at the center. My point is she made them happy by having great programs for them. For example, a huge Memorial Day parade, a celebration, and a place, and it's a place that they can go to daily to socialize, play cards and other games, drink coffee, eat lunch, and enjoy the company of their peers, and solve all the problems of the world. Baby boomers and others need to repay these folks for their service. They are a segment of our society that made it possible for us to be able to be safe and never be attacked on our homeland. We owe them big time. I only ask you all to give, there's a lot of thought, just one building can mean so much and have a great impact on the vulnerable segments of our society. Ms. Tweetin suggested the library could be used for, as a very good building to use for the center. Please think about that, and she plans to follow up on the issue, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Or questions? No, Mr. Gibbs. Hey, Ann. Thank you. We save you. We save you.
How everybody doing? Darnell Gibbs, military veteran, Deputy Director, Essex County Cops for Kids. I know she said earlier that they wasn't going to be reviewing the applications until the new group came in. I was just going to ask, is there any type of consideration to actually view it? And the reason why I ask this is because our application isn't a new application. We was paying rent since April for the last location. You guys didn't like that location, we found another location, and I just start paying rent for another location. So, like everybody said over and over, this is a costly process. So with that being said, I was trying to figure out if it is a possibility to have the application viewed next month because our timeline for the state is also coming close to being expired, expiring. And then if not, when exactly can I expect to actually hear back from the task force? I'm not sure how the whole, you know, when you get elected, how that process go. I know, you know, I'm assuming it must be some type of training and everything like that, so I'm not very knowledgeable about that aspect. So I don't know if that process takes a month, does it take two months, does it take three months? And then after these newly-elected individuals are in place, how soon will the next meeting be? So this way, like I said, I'm paying rent again for another location. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out exactly when I can expect it to be seen, that's all. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Hi, Anthony Pagliosi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I just wanted to give you a couple highlights that happened earlier this month, and then also some things that are coming up next month. First, on November 4th, we did a, four photo ops in one day because we opened four bridges throughout Essex County. Two of them were on the border of West Orange. One was Lakeside Avenue, and the other one was Mitchell Street. So there's two new infrastructure projects that were completed there. Councilman Rutherford joined us at, at a couple of those. Last week was the first week for the Holiday Lights Spectacular at Turtle Bag Zoo. It continues this weekend on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, next weekend, Friday and Saturday, Sunday, and then every night from December 9th to December 31st, closed on December 24th and 25th. The hours each night are 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Admission is free, but we do ask residents who come to bring donations of non-perishable food, winter coats, or new toys, and these are donated to the Community Food Bank and other local organizations that help the less fortunate throughout Essex County. And then finally, on December 3rd and December 4th, is the return of our Historic Holiday House Tour. There's 11 locations on the self-guided tour, and one of them is the, is Glenmont in West Orange. All this information is on the website, which is essexcountyNJ.org. I also would like to offer my congratulations to Mayor-elect McCartney and Councilwoman Elect Scarpa. Look forward to continue working with everyone on the board and Ms. Scarpa as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. Oh, sorry.
Zoom. I'm Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe, anyone on Zoom?
Any member of the public in the Zoom audience who cares to address the town council can do so now by using the raise-the-hand function at the bottom of your computer screen. If you don't see it or are not familiar with it, just move your cursor, mouse cursor along the bottom of the screen, and it will become visible. Any member of the public in the Zoom audience wishing to address the council? Council President, I see none.
Thank you. I wanted to start with Rosary. Rosary reminded me that I did not thank Laura Van Dyke. We're talking about programs for seniors. Last Saturday, Laura Van Dyke and Noelia Perez stood outside in that very cold weather to have their fall cleanup. We had an excellent, that was a rainy day back in the spring, but this is where seniors can sign up, and volunteers across town came out to help seniors with the fall cleanup. So I understand that that went very well. So, thank you for the reminder. And yeah, we've had had, we had all decided that come the beginning of the year, we would look at an advisory board, particularly to look for grants and the resources that many had promised to be active members. So I really would like to see that put in place. Anthony, thank you very much for the covert improvements for our township and the Holiday Lights Spectacular, as always. I think you told me last time that there are a million lights that are up this. Spectacular. And for Mr. Gibbs, you know, again, I feel like I just want to apologize to you that this process, about this process, and that I will have a conversation with the task force to see between now and the end of the year if that's something that we can put together so that you don't have to wait one more month, because even if we put it together, it's still going to take time come January, and it, it doesn't seem fair that you have waited so long. So I'm hoping that the task force can meet between now and the end of the year and between the holidays, just to at least review your new application, or your new location. Thank you. Any other comments? That's all I have. Anything to add? Does that seem possible that the task force? I'm looking, my head is going back and forth. I'm hoping that that is possible, that you would be able to accommodate Mr. Gibbs.
I'll send out some dates and hopefully we can.
I'll send out some dates and hopefully we can.
Yeah, I'm willing to.
Okay. So at least you have two committee members that are willing to meet. Now we'll just, I'll reach out to the rest and have a conversation with council president on moving forward. Certainly want to review your new location.
I feel like that that should happen before the end of the year, just because you're already familiar with him, we've heard, you know, we know your background, we know your standing, and I think that that should happen as opposed to a brand-new task force coming in in January. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with that.
Okay, good. Any other comments about public comment?
Sure.
Councilman?
So, yeah, thank you, Council President. Thank you as always, Mr. Fagan, Mr. Puglisi, for your timely information. Ms. Morelli, I do support additional programming for seniors and a senior center and a senior advisory board. I'm looking forward to working with the next council to get that done, and our next mayor. You are right, everyone in the last campaign agreed that doing more for seniors is important, and I expect that you and others will hold us accountable for what we've already said we would do. So come January, I'm excited about the opportunity to do that, and I think you'll find a much more favorable climate in January than you've found over the past. Mr. Gibbs, you know, I do sympathize with you. I thought at the last meeting that there was some commentary about reviewing your application in a reasonable timeframe. I could be wrong, but I thought Ms. Councilwoman Matute Brown had said that she was going to review. Now, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I do think that your continued presence here, which, if I'm saying anything that's not accurate, please correct me, is of your own volition, not because I have asked you or anyone else ever to make public comment. Anyone who says something like that is absolutely lying. But I do think your continued presence, your continued presence here marks flaws in the system, and I do hope that we can work that out in short fashion. So, you've heard a commitment from our next mayor, and I believe she is going to be a woman of her word, and we'll hopefully have something done for you soon, positively or negatively, but at least give you clarity on what the process is going to be. All right, that does it for me, Council President.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, so I just want to publicly, you know, thank, and Mr. Fagan brought them up, our retirees, our longtime, and I'm glad you did that, our longtime policeman Frank Romeo and Mr. Lepore. You know, we've been so lucky in this township to have so many committed individuals throughout the years that have a long longevity within our township, and it says a lot. I know Mr. Lepore, we were teasing him as retirement, about if we could all call him because he's been so instrumental in so many projects, and, but I just hope they both enjoy their retirements very well deserved. And also, you know, Ms. Morelli, your words of our war heroes, thinking about Veterans Day, I forgot to mention Mr. Longo celebrated 100 years for his birthday, and one of the few, and it gets fewer each year unfortunately, of our war heroes that we lose, and we are fortunate enough to have him at our Veterans Day celebration this year, which is, which is very, very proud that we have that in here in West Orange. But the Toby Katz Civic Center is such a great venue as well. I was up there last week, I couldn't go to conference, so I was able to sneak over to Thanksgiving party that was being held there for our mayor's program for the disabled, and a beautiful program. And it's just such a lovely, you know, place on the water, and so we talked about it in years past of growing that into more of a drop-in senior center, which can easily be done. You know, I had even mentioned in the past, I'll personally buy a Keurig to leave there, so whoever wants to drop in to have coffee could come, play chess, you know, have activities there. But again, unfortunately, COVID has, you know, stalled all that, but now I think we can move forward. Sirens. Move forward and make those kind of plans, and I look forward to working with Susan on that as well. You've been a longtime advocate, so, you know, we'll keep moving the programs forward. But thank you for all your input always. You taught us a lot about the programs that they do in the other towns, and we're able to implement them here. And again, I'm glad we'll be able to get, try to get together for Mr. Gibbs, but again, I, you know, don't want to promise the world, you know, it's all about the location, so I'm curious to see where that is, and hopefully we could give you a quick response based on that. And last, I just want to share with the public real quick, because I didn't do it in my announcements, but on my way here, I want everyone to take note, the blinking signs are on Main Street, so if you see a crosswalk blinking, please stop, because folks are there waiting to cross. And, you know, we need to talk about that, Mr. Gross, with the chief, about looking at enforcement, because cars were just going through it, and that defeats the whole purpose if the crosswalks are blinking and folks can't cross because everyone's going through them. So I just forgot to mention that earlier in my report, so I just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman? Anything to add?
Not at all.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams, anything to add?
Certainly. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. Again, Ms. Morelli, certainly everyone is supportive of doing more for our seniors as we will all continue to age in place. We love West Orange, and we certainly want to make sure that our seniors feel welcome and certainly have a tremendous amount of programs and opportunities to continue making West Orange their home. Mr. Gibbs, I think we look forward to finding out more information about your new location, and certainly we look forward to this industry having a business in West Orange in the immediate near future. Also, just wanted to add that, along with my council colleagues and mayor-elect, that we all attended the League of Municipalities Conference, we took a tremendous amount of classes and just got so much information, and we're all looking forward to doing different and new things in 2023 in West Orange. And in addition, attended the Essex County Food Distribution at Turtle Bag Zoo. Within less than an hour, it started at 9, but almost before 10 o'clock, the lines were wrapped up and down Northfield Avenue, and turkeys were distributed, food boxes were distributed, and unfortunately, we could not even accommodate all those that were lined up. Just a reminder that people are still struggling. This is the holiday season, but we all are feeling the impact and effects of inflation, whether it be when we go to the grocery store, to the gas station. So I think we all have a lot to be thankful and grateful for. So just wishing all of our residents and my council colleagues the most happy Thanksgiving, and be well, be safe. And with that, thank you. I'm leaving. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night. Enjoy. Safe travels.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. Okay. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, October 25th, public meeting.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilman?
305, Council President, if you may, if I may, 305, 306, 307, and 308.
Okay.
I have a question on 293. I'm not pulling it to vote no. Just have a question on that.
Yeah, me too.
I think all my other questions were answered.
Councilwoman Kessely, know anything to be pulled?
A question on, or comment on 289. Question 293, I think I'll be okay with it. And I assume you're pulling the closed session? Or, no, no, no.
Moving.
Just that we're moving them to the end of the meeting.
And I'll have comment when it comes up on 310 and 311, if anybody has questions. I know Ms. Brill will make a presentation on the budget like we do at the next month's meeting.
Yep.
So if anybody has questions now, I could, you know, if she's here, she could answer them for you.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
We just want to, I don't know if anybody's mentioned already, but 288, 22, the executive session with regard to downtown redevelopment, we're not going to have that executive session.
Okay.
We're not having it, or we're moving it?
We're not having it.
We're not.
Okay.
There's nothing new to report at this point, so maybe next meeting.
Sure.
Hopefully we have an update. Thank you.
I did have questions on 289. I am pulling 293. Questions on 295, 301. And also was pulling all the ones that Councilman Rutherford had questions on, or he pulled for a discussion.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's it.
So Councilman, do you want to start with your questions on 293?
I just have one question. I looked back and I could not find it, so please forgive me if I'm mistaken.
No, go.
But I think, and I didn't speak with you about this earlier, so I do apologize, Mr. Gross.
293 was pulled.
But we're on 293 right now, right?
Yeah, but 293 was pulled.
All right, so that was pulled. You did have a question. Let me ask you.
Just for the question.
Sure.
So then we're going to vote on as in the consent. It'll be a separate, no. We're not going to.
It's a press. I pulled it.
Okay, then we can wait. We can wait.
All right, so let's do consent.
Councilwoman Kessely, did you pull anything? I'm sorry.
I just, I just wanted to, it was only a comment on 289.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
What's been pulled?
Okay, so 293 was pulled, and 305, 306, 307, 308. Okay. Is there a motion to?
I'm sorry, I had questions on some of the ones that aren't going on.
We were just going to do the consent and get that.
And then answer the questions and then.
Well, no, no, we answer questions. Yeah, I've got to answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Otherwise, I might not vote for it.
Right, right, right. So you may want to call it.
Yes. I may want to, but on 289, for the HVAC louvers, I know we had a brief discussion earlier about that. So, again, with the change orders, and I know we have these discussions often, but how, not being, you know, a maintenance or electrician, how didn't we know at the time when we were getting the initial estimates that we were going to need to replace the exterior louvers?
I will say that when you do big projects, when our design teams do it, they're very thorough, but sometimes things get missed, and this is an example of something that got missed.
I can maybe help you, Councilwoman.
Go, go ahead.
So I sat in two weeks ago on a meeting, I'm on, so all of you know, I'm on a trustee board for the Friends of the Public Library. So Marge Minion, who's also, is also on the actual board and the Friends Group, she's been heading these meetings with Dave Cubey, with the contractors and town officials, and Pete Smeraldo's been very instrumental with working with all the contractors. I had mentioned earlier about windows coming in, and they, you know, that didn't happen. There's, you know, just seeing all the intricacies of the construction itself, there's a lot going on there. Obviously, you're ripping everything down to the studs, all-new construction, things that, there are things that were missed. You know, some things, you know, we talked about the, I believe, the water fountain.
The water fountains last night.
Just because you're doing constant walkthroughs of the property of the building, and you're realizing some things that may not have been originally put in the original spec that aren't necessary, and so things of that nature. My question for on these louvers, are these the ones that are on the window panels? Okay. So, and this was discussed when I was there. So picture this one, our windows now, they're large windows. The windows go to the, actually to the floor. The bottom panel is where the old HVAC units were in the actual windows, so like picture like the bottom where the wood is there. That all is being removed because HVAC has been replaced throughout the entire building, which is a good thing, and it was needed. So now, these panels, and I had asked a question when I was there, like, what are you doing with the panels? Well, a lot of the panels were damaged from the removal, and they had to be replaced. Also, there's, and that's something that needs to be discussed with the contractors, they were looking at it, if we don't do the windows, do you want to leave? There was really no final decision on, do you leave these panels that are all beat up, and we're cleaning them up the best we could, and put them back in that window? Some are so badly replaced, they have to be done. There are some that are left there. Aesthetically, how would they look? I mean, we're, you know, we committed to full renovation.
A brand-new library.
So you're going to get these change orders. But what I could say, and attesting to my time at the meeting, is they've been very thorough, all parties involved, in making sure that the, everybody knows it's tight budget, and trying to do, get as much out of what they could do, but there's been supply chain issues, pricing's coming in higher on some parts than were originally quoted. And even with the windows, I mean, we can't even put new windows in at this point because we would have to wait for them. So that's another decision that eventually has to be made, because there's damage where some of the, some of these windows are, they may not last. So you're, they're going to make it as nice as they can, and they may need some dollars to go further, ideally to replace some of the windows, but you're talking, what, one and a half million dollars for the entire building, Mr. Gross?
That's, that's the initial estimate. It could still be more, especially now that with the inflationary factors. And the reality is, and everything that Councilwoman indicated is all true and accurate, it is a complicated project, it is an extensive project, sometimes things get missed. The one thing you do understand, if it hadn't gotten missed, this cost would have been added into the project. So, whether it had been exactly the same cost, we'll never know, but, you know, and would it have been better if it was in the project? Absolutely. But when you're talking about trying to shoe-fit a six-and-a-half-million-dollar project in, I'm sorry, what is really probably an eight-to-nine-million-dollar project into a 6.3-million-dollar budget, you have to make decisions at the time when you're doing design, and they're under a lot of pressure to keep the costs down. Again, I'll go back to this, this is a relatively minor miss, but it is a miss, so.
Thank you for that. It is, and for the public, it is a minor miss, but, you know, this council has been discussing change orders, so I wanted to find out why. The amount of this one is 13,933.89 compared to the entirety of the cost for the project. It is insignificant, I would say, however, you know, it is a question as to how these things are missed. So I appreciate that background.
Yeah, I'll give you another example, like, there's latches on the top of the windows, and they look horrible. So, again, if they decide, say that comes in at $4,000 to replace them, some were broken, that may be another change order. So, is it, you know, do you do that versus get the new windows? So, you know, we're going to get these kind of change orders moving forward, but I think it's important that everyone knows why, so I.
Why, yeah, absolutely. I do appreciate that. Thank you. The other question that I had is on 295.
Can we stay on that one just for a second, before we move on?
On the 289?
Yes. So, there's likely a typo in the, on the cover sheet, the front page of 28922, it says, "These louvers are not necessary." I just want to make sure that that in fact is a typo.
Oh, that's got to be, because they're necessary, otherwise, otherwise we'd have gaping holes in, in certain locations, so we'll, we'll make sure that's corrected.
Yeah, please do. But then that gets back to the point, and I, I understand that some things are going to be missed. But these do seem like things that should have been caught. I can understand it's a complex project. Here's, here's what I would like, I don't want to rehash it, right, you've given the, and Councilwoman Castelino has given an explanation too, and I get it. Here's what I think we should be doing, taking notes on these things, so that when we bid out things in the future, we know whether or not these bids have integrity, if these guys have done their job well, or poorly, or exceptionally well, whatever the case may be. Missing, um, an exterior louver, uh, which I assume would allow for, uh, you know, the ability for air to flow in or out, or however that's going to work. That seems like a basic thing, so does, uh, water fountains. And so, when we talked about the water fountains, even though it was a small number, and I know we're up at 76,000 right now in total change orders, still a small number, right? Less than 2% of the total budget, I believe. But those kind of basic things should be noted, so that when we're looking for professionals and we're awarding contracts, and we're working with people, that we have some confidence that they're going to, not going to miss these kinds of things, um, so we don't have these kind of conversations in, in council.
You're 100% right, councilman, and meticulous notes of every meeting are taken, and all of this information is included in there, so.
Can we get a scorecard of some sort? Can we get some kind of a history or a review? So if we were to use the same architect again, um, and, and maybe I'm misplacing the responsibility with the architect, and if I am, I apologize. But if we were to consider this architect again, I would like to have, in that consideration, some review of our history as a township, working with them as a professional. Can, can we do that?
Sure, sure, we can, we can do that, but I, I do want to, I do want to say something. If you remember the beginning, I, I made a commitment to, um, bring.
Thank you for that.
To you in real time, before they occurred, um, and, and what you're seeing is the same thing that goes on in just about every project. You know, you, you, you don't have projects of this size and nature without things like this happening. It's just that historically, you've seen them all together in one or two, or change orders over a period of time, and not as they go along. So I just wanted you to keep, I don't, I don't want you to think that this is an indicia of, of, that, that this particular, um, um, vendor is, 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 is sloppy, or, or, or not. Didn't do their job, that's not the case. This is, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's not unlike when you go to Home Depot to replace a door in your house, and you get home and you open up and realize that you, you forgot a closer, or you forgot this, or you forgot, you know, now, that's, that's, that's a simplistic example, but the point is, these things happen. And, and, and this is what's happening here so far, quite frankly, I think is relatively low in the scale of issues. But yes, we'll have these notes, and we'll certainly can, can provide that information in the future.
Yeah, and I think in that case, it actually helps the architect, right? Like, if, if, if we end up, because on some of these projects, we, there's one tonight that's got over 20%, you know, in change orders. If we see.
You'll, you'll never see that again.
Yeah, well, I mean, but like, if, with this particular architect, let's say it ends up being 3%, that actually would in order to their benefit. But I do think it's important to keep score.
And I do think doing it this way, it, it's much more difficult for them, um, but I do, and I think that ultimately, this is going to minimize the impact of change orders. Because as we go along, um, I think they're going to, they now understand that we're looking at this.
Yes.
Uh, in, in a sharper way, uh, and, and so they're projecting differently than they might have otherwise. So I, I, you know, I, I say we're doing it different, I think we're doing it better, um, but I think that in that process, we have to understand that, that from your perspective, the tolerance for the frequency of, of these changes, you, you have to give for that. Because, because you're seeing change orders of 13,000 instead of 130,000, and 130,000 wouldn't, would be because we had 10 of them, right? With, that kind of got put together. So, um, I, I think it's a better process, um, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that I've been able to, to, to get it this far, and we'll get it over the, we'll get it over the, over the, the line, over the finish line.
Yeah, and they're very meticulous in, 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 in the meetings, and very thoughtful, and Mr. Smeraldo, and by me being present, definitely, you know, they, they, they know the message that they, you know, they don't want to have to bring a change order to us. But you're going to see more, but hopefully they won't be so drastic.
I, I don't think, just for the record, I don't think, you know, on a $6 million budget, 76,000 in change orders is ridiculous. I think that's probably low, uh, at least at this stage of the game. But I do think it's important to keep track and keep data.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council president, I did have another, um, question on 29522, and this is for the, um, estimated costs with exclusions to, um.
Spillway?
Sagan?
No, the spillway.
Oh, yes, for this, uh, for the spillway. And I read, um, the exclusions, and it's with respect to exclusions due to chronic supply shortages of materials, slope stabilization, vertical trash rack repair at the bottom, three and a half foot high rail on top of the wall, replacement of deteriorated culvert pipe grate on top of trash rack. Now, the quote from, um, Grabowski is for 49,810. Our municipal engineer has asked, um, that the, believes the cost will be outlined, um, and expended for 65,000. So, I guess I'm asking, we are expending this for something that's necessary, absolutely. But I'm concerned that we are doing this, and we're not stabilizing the slope, and we're not, so everything at the bottom, at the foundation, is not going to be stabilized. And so I'm concerned as to why we're not doing that. I know that there are supply shortages of materials, so.
Well, any, anything that we would do further above and beyond that, we wouldn't do on an emergent basis, because, you know, what we do in, this is an emergency resolution. And so that it is based on, um, we, we didn't, we didn't go through a competitive process for this. So this would only include, um, things that are related directly to the emergency. So, uh, any, any further work would have to be done on a, on a bid basis, uh, so that, that, that's why it's separate. It's not that we're not going to do the work.
Okay.
It's just the procurement process is limited in an emergency to the, the scope of that emergency, and not, um, you can't expand it into, further into work that is not of an emergent nature.
I understand.
Stabilization, the initial stabilization is, would be emergent.
Okay. I appreciate that response, um, I just had a concern with not doing it all at once, but, God bless you.
Is it the windows?
No.
Algae?
It's a legitimate concern, uh, it may end up being less expensive, because if we do a different procurement, we might get a better price.
That, that's always the hope. And also, um, the last question I had was with respect to 30122, um, again, change order number two, for Degnan Park baseball field improvements. Of course, another change order, this is the third, and the last was supposed to be the final.
Yeah, this, these are as, this, these are as-built.
Bless you.
Uh, change orders, um, and so this is, you know, this is basically the wrap-up on the project. So the final amount, it's 550314, and now we're done basically with the project. And if you think about it, when you do a project, you, you don't necess, you know, a lot of these things are, are bid based on quantities, uh, that you use. And so when you're actually getting into the field, and something has to be, you know, you, you, I'm making, again, I'm making it up, instead of, instead of 20 yards, you need a 22 yards. Well, you have a price per yard, but you wasn't awarded for that, for those extra two yards, so we have to come back and, and do a change order for that, in, in, in the as-built, and that's what this is.
And is this the final final? Thank you.
Mr. Gross.
You're all.
Those are all the questions I had, the other one I pulled. Thank you, council president.
Can I make a comment in regards to these change orders? Because like, like putting us in a situation, but I feel like sometimes, if, for example, like, when these projects are being developed, and if you don't have all the stakeholders at the site, and I, I, and I'm just going off some former projects that were done, because then somebody, you know, after the fact says, well, we forgot about X, or Y, or Z. And that's my recommendation moving forward sometimes, to make sure you have all the stakeholders present, because then X, Y, or Z wouldn't be left out. And, and it makes the bid cleaner, I think.
I may, I, I kind of flippantly said before, you're not going to see a 20%.
Yeah.
And, and, and while that may not be 100% accurate, I'm not saying you'll never see another 20% because there may be, but, um, I, I, I look at these a little differently. And, and I think that the way that, um, we'll be moving forward with these types of contracts, uh, will, will be different, and, and we'll, we, we, if, 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 we're not going to allow that kind of expansion, um, if, if at all possible. And, and sometimes what happens is, um, you know, we, we, all within the law, perhaps expand the, the project because we, because we have, we, we got a good bid, so therefore we, maybe we could do an extra street here and there, and that comes back sometimes to bite us. And it's, it's, it's good, you know, there, there's positives to it, but there's also negatives. And so we're going to look at that very hard to make sure that, that we're not inadvertently expanding the scope of the project. Albeit perfectly legal, um, but to, to a point where we end up with these type of, of perceptual problems. And it, I think that's important to, to, to work on. So it, that's one of the, it's all, one of the goals that I have with working with the departments, is to, is to figure out how, how to get that done, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you have more questions?
Yeah, on 293, I think.
Well, that was the one that was pulled, I didn't get there yet.
Oh, that's right, okay.
This is the rest, so are there any questions besides what's pulled?
Nope.
Okay.
More questions?
No, I'm good.
Uh, we, we did pull, uh, 310 and 311, is that right?
No.
No? I thought, uh, there was a, didn't you pull?
I saw, I said we have questions, I, I could have, Ms. Brill's here to answer them. She's going to do her budget at the next, um, at the next meeting, the presentation.
So it's being presented.
So we're going to vote on the budget now?
No, this is just the introduction.
This introduction requires two readings, so the next one will be December 20th. Gives you a chance to review it now, and then the next meeting, she'll be available with a full presentation.
Okay, so then that raises a question, and Councilwoman Castelino, maybe you can answer this on the resolution 310 on the bylaws?
Sure, I can.
Could you just tell us?
Me or you?
Just tell us what the changes are, I understand that there were three different changes?
Real simple, mhm. Okay, so we had a few changes, um, a few of us met. So, one was real simple, top of page three, section nine, meeting by telephone and other technology. Because now we edit in, you know, we have Zoom, our phones, so that was a easy one. We wanted to change, uh, the organization, on page five, the standing committees. We want to tighten up, um, everyone's responsibilities, because, and I'm going to ask this of, of all of my colleagues and, and new council people coming on board. You know, we, we want to make sure, uh, volunteers are aware of exactly what their responsibilities are when they sign up for the committees. Because when you make appointments and we, we solicit volunteers, we, we want to make sure that they know what, what the committees are all about. Because, you know, we, in regards to attendance and responsibility, um, all of these boards only are as successful as the time that the volunteers could get. We always appreciate any time, but when you sign up for a particular, you know, job, so we want to make sure the person's well aware of what those roles are, so that they could fulfill those commitments, uh, in advance. So, um, we added to, some details to the committee, so everyone was very clear before they volunteered for them. And then on page six, Article seven, fiscal year, section two, we changed the language because our budget, um, this year is, I think, what, at 250, 252,000? Years ago, we were even lower than 250, and the threshold to do an audit was at 250. So, um, there was language, language in there to do an audit, but you weren't required, because we never went over that amount, so we just wanted to clean that up. Uh, the Alliance always does every year, uh, year-end fiscal review with the accountant, where, um, Ms. Brill does a full tax return and a, a full processing of that, so you could read the language in there. We just wanted to make sure, you know, formally it said that we were, we would provide an audit, but we weren't, because we weren't over that threshold, so we wanted to make sure the language matched to, uh, what was being provided. And that's it.
Thank you.
So if you have any other questions, just let us know, and that was it, nothing else changed on that.
So, so does that mean that there's no audit required?
No, it's a million, was it a million? Yeah, it's a million, your budget needs to be a million dollars.
What, what triggered that change?
Um, the state, that statute. Go ahead. What?
What was that last?
The million, it's a million dollar threshold.
It's a million dollar threshold. We still have, um, our tax returns, uh, are prepared by a certified accountant, which is what, um, is enumerated in there. It's just the need for an annual audit, we fall well below the threshold. It got changed to 750 a couple of years ago, and now it's at a million.
And it's a $6,000 expense plus.
I, I do it at my organization every year, um, so I understand the expense.
Yeah.
So the state threshold is now a million?
Yes. Well, it's, and before that, it was, what, at?
It was 750, and then it was 500, and then it was 250.
So that, they were always well below.
It's been creeping up.
Okay.
And what occurred is they went to, um, years ago, you went to one of your, before I became on the Alliance, to one of the convention, uh, shows in the convention, and the, one of the classes, you know, said that you didn't have to do that because of the threshold.
The discussion among the board was really that if there was a material change in something that we've done, that we would maybe need an extra set of eyes on it, and then that would elevate to something above what our accountant does. But for now, and at least this year, um, depending on what grant money we're applying for, that may be a game changer, and we may want to get some extra set of eyes on it.
Does the CPA provide a financial review?
Yes.
Okay, and so that, we pay for roughly probably 1,500, $2,000?
Twenty nine, 2,600.
I don't know that accountant.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so we, our CPA provides a financial review now, and the state has changed their threshold to where an audit is required, to 1 million. Which means that we don't have to do one, but should we decide to do one, we can.
We can.
What is the mechanism for deciding to do an audit?
That's what I just said, that if there was some material change within what we do and how we do it, like, um, another, another town, I think South Orange and Maplewood, got a lot of ido relief money into their downtown, and they ended up doing an audit, just to make sure that they could completely document the ins and outs of that money. If we were to get, I would say, 75, 80,000 dollars in grant money from any source, TPA money. Yeah, that that would elevate us, that we would want to just make sure that we're all doing everything that we're supposed to do, and that our best practice is, um, being implied.
That's not what I meant. What I meant was, how do we agree to do an audit? Is there a, a board vote? Is there a council vote? Is, how does that work?
At every single meeting, we provide a profit and loss statement, and if there's something out of whack in there, I would assume that the board would say, hey, what's this all about? And then that maybe would trigger. We pretty much know what going in, what kind of money is coming in and out of our, of our books. Things don't change all that much year to year. So it would be, you know, at the monthly board meeting when we really see what the financials are and what our fundraising is, or impacts to our assessments, things like that.
But, but it's not spelled out, so saying the board would have to vote in order to engage a CPA to have an audit conducted?
Correct.
That is not spelled out?
It is spelled out.
Oh, okay, so the board would have to vote? Okay, and it's a simple majority?
The board would have to approve it, because it's a money.
It's a simple majority?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a quorum of, of our total members.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do like the part about the clarity for the board members to understand. I think every board should have that. You know, people sign up, and actually, I know the chamber makes a sign-off on the committee that you're on, and your commitment to perform the duties are the responsibilities. It's a good addition. All right, that was not pulled, that was just a question. Any other questions?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some votes?
Second.
Poll in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
All right, we're going to go back to 293. That was the contract for the recycling center?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Matute Brown pulled that.
Thank you. I pulled this because, you know, I, I know that the challenges that we had when I first joined the council and with the company that is still running our recycling center. I pulled it because I am going to vote against this. I know this is an extension of a contract, but, you know, it's been four years. We continue to extend this contract. We're only receiving $4,167 per month. It's 50,000 annually. I think that that is barely enough. I understand that this contractor also benefits and profits from selling other things, including pavers and salt, and that might seem insignificant, but it is, you know, a competitor to some of our businesses here in town that do the same. So I just, I want to know, and this is for my council colleagues, is there a plan, you know, we haven't discussed it, but is there a plan to put together a task force or a committee to review the work that this particular contractor who runs our recycling center? Is the best fit for us to analyze what, you know, if there's other opportunities for us? And I know that when we put this out to bid last time, there were no responses. So the question with the task force is, you know, what did we put in those bid specs that was not attractive to other vendors?
So, yeah, this is a, this is a contract for our recycling center, which if we did not have a vendor to run it, we would have to make decisions about whether we were going to run it. We've done some, we've done some back of the napkins, if you will, and what it would actually cost us to do that, and would probably upwards of at least a quarter million dollars a year, if not more, to do that. So there, there is a value even at zero dollars of revenue to the township for this contract. Having said that, this, we, we're asking you to approve this one-year extension. This is going to take us through February of 2024. That will give us this year to go out and prepare a new bid spec and, and try to get, put a product out there that we, allow us to attract other vendors, if they exist. And it's still unclear who wants to be in this business, but we will be, we're looking at making those changes necessary to get somebody in, in moving forward with the terms and conditions. We're aware of the issue of them selling certain things, and it's minimal. It's not minimal if you sell them, you're, you know, you're a small business in town, and you have a competitor, we got that. But for right now, we ask that this be extended one year. There is no way that in 60 or 90 days, we would put a good bid together that would come in to replace them at the, in February. It's just not, not feasible. But, but to do that starting now, keeping in mind that we're also going to be doing our garbage contract next year as well, so it's really a good time to look at both, to see if there's some synergies or some, some way to do things different for both of those contracts that would allow us to, to provide a better product for our residents. So keeping that in mind, we, we ask that you approve this one-year extension, understanding that a new bid will have to be generated and move forward, and, and that in the, in the end of next year, we are going to be looking to have an award based on a new bid process.
And, and I'm, I am happy to hear that because it is unrealistic to think that you're going to find someone in 30 or 90 days. I do agree with that. But I'm also happy to hear that you're going to be doing the process with the, with the garbage disposals as well for sanitation. And in doing the back of the napkin, I know that there's always the concern of if we do it in-house, then it's not just an employee's salary, but it's also health benefits, it's also, you know, pension payments if we bring it in.
It's getting, it's hiring the staff. We have a difficult time hiring the staff for the work that we have to do now. So hiring staff in, in, in our environment is, is a big concern as well.
Yeah.
And everything you said, and on top of that, it's not a service that's optional. So if, if, if we take that on and, you know, we have recycling building up, we've got to do something with that. So it is, it's, it's, it's a huge undertaking to do that ourselves.
And I would imagine that if we had another, if we did not have a recycling center, because not every municipality has their own, if we did not, and possibly a consideration when you're looking at these bid specs and doing the studies, that perhaps it'd be feasible for us to allow the, whoever gets the garbage contract to just take the recyclables and not have to, not, make it so that it's not necessary for us to have a recycling center. I, I do think, I do think that that space is large enough for us to benefit in a different way, other than being a recycling center.
Yeah, ultimately, anything other than the direction we're going, in, in a more refined way, but in, in better to approve, will bring us nothing but dollar signs, not in, but out. It is, it's going to be very, very, if we, if we didn't have the recycling center where our residents could take things, those things would end up on our streets, and they would end up in garbage, and we'd be paying.
Tip fees.
Bulwark fees, yeah.
Fees to dispose them, because people would be throwing them out somehow. So it's not, there's no, there's no good way to turn this clock back, having said that, that we know. We're going to look at it, and we'll, and if we, like I said, we're, we're going to walk into this with our eyes open and say, okay, we could rethink it. But our experience tells us that, that we need that recycling center, and we, we need to give our residents every opportunity to take stuff out of the garbage stream and get it into the recycling stream, even if we're paying for the recycling to be removed, ultimately, as, as we are for the home recycling. It's still better than paying and having it end up in the dumps, so.
I wanted to pick up on that because I was, believe it or not, thrilled that the Health Director asked me to sit on the Solid Waste Committee. Believe it or not. But I could even show you my conference book and how many of the sessions I sat in about recycling, and that they're, the end markets are getting, are just diminishing. So part of the plan would be to look at whoever that hauler is when the bids go out, and look for other alternatives to collect our recyclables. And that was what was coming up in a lot of these sessions that, between China and Thailand and the other countries that are not taking the recyclables, we need to find more creative ways to find where they can go. And there are local places that we can look at. So I truly was thrilled that.
Solid waste.
To sit on solid waste.
I am satisfied with that response. It is till February, but I'm looking forward to when the new administration takes over, that that process just continues to see.
To collaborate between the two.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That, that's why I pulled it, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino? Yes, I wanted to discuss it a little bit too. So again, my sentiments match yours to my council colleague. I was hoping, you know, obviously we don't have time, so I was glad to see it was only a year extension. But this has come up with the pavers, the ice melt products. If you look on page 23, the contract, you know, those items aren't mentioned in there from the original contract, but I also know that some of the items that they're allowed to sell for profit, they can't even sell no longer because of the market. So I don't know, do we need to amend, to add on these other items that they're, they've been selling just to, to allow it? I mean.
The, the extending with, with changing the contract is not something that, that we have an option to do.
Okay.
You know, to, whatever they're doing under the terms of this, this contract, if, if, if we extended those terms, and, and look, it is certainly something we will consider in, in, in the RFP for the next contract of how to deal with these issues, because there may be things we don't want them to sell, and then maybe we may be, things that we do want them to sell. So perhaps there's a process by which we make that decision as opposed to just outlawing it. But that's something we've got to look at.
My question is to you is how do you enumerate that? How do you know what their revenue is? What, I didn't have time to look through the 200 pages of the original contract this weekend, but where, you know, how do you get that information from them as far as the, the revenue?
Well, if we put it in our contracts that they have to disclose certain information, then they have to disclose it, but, you know, so that, again, we're, we're going to look at that.
So we didn't have that in the original?
No.
Contract, yeah, because I couldn't find it, so.
No.
Council President, if I can, I mean, I, when this came up the last time, I had extensive conversations with Wayne DeFeo, who supervises that site for us.
Yeah.
He's our consultant, and he indicated to me that, one, there's very few people who do this anymore, and, and those who do it basically all sell stuff like that, and they don't make much money on it.
Yeah.
So it's really, you know, I mean, people have suspicions. I get the same emails that you do, but, but the fact of the matter is, according to him, they just don't, it's not a big market, they don't make a lot of money, they do, it's a little bit of stuff, extra stuff that they get. They're private companies, they don't have to tell us that stuff.
Yeah.
So it's, it's proprietary. So, you know, at the end of the day, it probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference, it's practical matter.
The one thing I will have to commend the vendor is, because when you first did come on board, there were a lot of issues, and there's been a lot of, you know, they really, they really made strides to improve the site. I was just up there two weeks ago, bringing cardboard up there, and it's just every time I go, it just, you know, there's more and more improvement, so.
I go there every week.
Yes, so you know. So I do appreciate that, and I have a feeling, it, even with the garbage contract, I'm looking forward to be involved with that, because I know with the school board side of it too, we lined up the contracts, and we couldn't get a bid for both entities last time. We're hoping we could do it this time, so we'll be working with them as well, with the committee. But, you know, I, I know, it's just, it's just, there's so many, not that many vendors out there that could handle our township for the size that we are with our topography. So it should be interesting. But we're going to work it and try to save the taxpayers money, if possible.
The Environmental Commission meets next Wednesday, and we do have a presentation on the agenda to look at composting too, for residents to have a composter up there. It's a local vendor, so something else that we would offer the residents there, since we own the site.
Did you have questions?
More to follow.
Yeah, I did, I still had some questions too. So that was actually one of them. I spoke with several people with regard to the recycling center. And to echo Mr. Kaiser's statement, everybody loves it. I mean, the overwhelming majority of people in town appreciate having a recycling center in town. It takes everything, including electronics. It is a huge convenience for us and would be a loss if we did not approve this contract. So I was not prepared to vote no, but I did want two things. One, wanted to talk about adding Java's composter or a composter there. Glad the Environmental Commission is looking at it. And there should be a way for us to benefit from that and encourage or require Reliable to include that service. Second, and I, I think we asked the last time for political contributions. Have they submitted their documentation for political contributions?
Yes.
Okay, I, I didn't see that.
Well, it's, for this round, it's after the contract.
Okay.
They have 60 days to provide. The last time we didn't, we didn't have it, but they did subsequently submit it, and we do have it.
Okay. Yeah, and I, you know, I wasn't quite sure exactly, and I couldn't find the minutes from that meeting, I didn't have a lot of time. I've been the last couple of weeks, as you all know, unplugged and recharging.
I wasn't coming here tonight without.
You're the best. But please bump it to the top of the inbox for me if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
Send it to the, send it back to me if you don't mind, from the last one. And that's it for me, Council President.
Thank you.
And by the way, I did not get it today. It's, we've had it for quite a while.
You know, I, I thought we went through this before.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure, but thank you.
All right. So now.
Madam clerk left, but I guess we can, if you want to hold the vote, we can.
Go on to the next question.
Is there an offer?
We, we should wait for her, I was going to take a second.
We'll vote on that, and then the others.
So when the Environmental Committee meets next week? Wednesday? Sorry. The conversation about odor mitigation, because we also receive a lot of complaints from the residents in that area, from just the recycling that we do.
Right. That had to do with, correct me if I'm wrong, but that had to do with the air rating of the leaf collection, right?
There are two things, if you don't mind, and I, I live in that neighborhood. The, the one, and Mr. DeFeo has been excellent when I've met with him as well. The first one was the smell, and they've addressed that effectively. And the second is the sound. It, it makes noise early Saturday morning, starting at 7:00 a.m., and so that does produce some sound or noise pollution.
As they're grinding the vegetative waste?
Yes, and they're moving the heavy equipment back and forth. Now, that could be addressed with, and I spoke with Mr. DeFeo about this, it could be addressed with thicker shrubbery or trees to buffer between the back end of the recycling center and the neighborhoods behind it. And as you may recall, a few years ago, we had a fire over there, which certainly took some of it.
That's what I meant about air rating, yes.
Some of it down. So if we could find a way, and he and I spoke about this, the issue for them is not actually getting the trees. The issue for them is maintaining them, having, making sure that they are cared for in those early days, but, you know, while they're trying to take root. So I'm happy to speak offline with Councilwoman Castellino and see if we can work with the Board of Ed to get some of the student groups, certainly next spring, to help care for these trees or shrubberies, because they expressed that they'd be willing to plant them, and that would be a long-term solution to the sound. But as far as I'm aware, the residents in the area, those are the only two complaints that we've had, and, and it seems that they're willing partners to address them.
Right, because the buffer was put in, berms and buffers were put in to try to mitigate that, and maybe that needs to be readdressed.
Yeah, the berms are helpful. They had shrubbery planted at the, at the top of the berm, and all of it died. So, you know, we've got to figure out a way to.
Well, and that could be part of the contract too, about maintaining that.
Absolutely.
Taking notes. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve 293-22?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I know I pulled it to vote no, but understanding, having that conversation explanation, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Resolution 305-22, resolution authorizing an agreement to enter into a contract with Delta Dental of New Jersey for employee dental, dental insurance. Councilman Rutherford, you pulled this.
I, as I've stated to the administration, I have no confidence in Fairview at all. I think they meddled in local elections in an improper and distasteful fashion, so I cannot support anything from them. I'm going to, for those same reasons, vote no on 306, 307, and 308. Yeah, I, I think that's enough. We're not going to be out here all night, it's already 8:30, we have a chance at going home early. I've stated my opinions on them in the past, so, you know, I'll, by reference, include all of those prior comments that I've made about Fairview, and for those reasons, I'm voting no.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes, I know you have questions also.
Yes, I did. So I, I had questions, hopefully, that you can just explain to the public for their benefit in understanding what these contracts are and your dealings with Fairview. I will say, as someone who came on the council and did not support their contracts initially, last year, the years run together for me now, last year, we did have a unanimous no vote for Fairview Insurance Brokers. Mr. Gross actually initiated a conversation between myself, himself, and one of the proprietors, and I found them to be reasonable inasmuch as there was a willingness to find where there were savings, and there were. And to me, that's what I said publicly, I will support them if they go out to bid and they come in as the lowest bidder. They came in with $2 million less than prior, and I said it then, and I would say it again, I'm looking at what they've presented, and if you can just talk about it, they seem like the best.
Broker?
Broker at this time.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, the, these resolutions are not about them as a broker. They were hired as our broker and our, our risk management earlier in the year, as part of their responsibilities are to go out and work the markets to get us the best pricing and the best programs for the health benefits for our, our employees and our retirees. Today, before you, you have four resolutions which will result, almost miraculously, in a, no increased cost in health benefits for the year 2023.
Right.
Zero. That's when the state health benefits is up 23%. And most other private entities are up in the high teens, if not, if not higher. The, they were able to bring in, quite frankly, I didn't bring the EMU tonight, but they did bring in Liberty Mutual for, and they, they brought them in at a, at a cost that is much less than we were paying sun, the last year and the year before that, bringing our stop-loss costs really, really low, and, and enable us to, enable us to come in at a zero increase in, in cost for these services. So our dental is going to be a zero increase, our TPA services for '23 will be a zero increase, our prescription drug costs, which is amazing, is coming in at zero for 2023.
Mr. Gross, is that for the retiree prescription benefits as well?
Sorry?
Is the same for the prescription benefits?
Prescription benefits as well.
For retirees?
Yeah, well, yes, for those that are under the age of 65. The only place we're having, and then the Liberty Mutual, which is our excess policy, which basically guarantees us, it's, we're self-insured, it, it is, as it gives us a guaranteed maximum and an expected cost and the administrative costs involved in that. So this is a really, really good outcome for us this year, and going into next year's budget. And, and the only place that we're going to see an increase, and that's not on here tonight, because we, we, we did join the Bergen HIF Health Insurance Fund for our retiree 65 age for the Medicare Advantage Plan, and that, that plan is going up 1.9%. So that's, that's probably our lea, it's number one, it's our least expensive plan because it's a wraparound to Medicare, and up at 1.9%. That's a marginal increase of, in this day and age, for sure. So we recommend all these to you, the, the issues that, the other outstanding issues you're talking about in terms of, of our, our broker and our risk managers, we'll all be coming up with professional services and other, you know, our other contracts in the beginning of the year, and certainly they'll have an opportunity to address that, whatever, whatever that is. And quite frankly, I don't know what, don't know yet what those recommendations will be. But I can tell you that tonight, we're recommending these for very strongly.
Council President, if I may?
Of course.
Just want to correct the record. Councilwoman Brown just said that they came in 2 million less than prior. This isn't, this is a clarification more than a correction. They, they came in 2,000, $2 million less than their prior cost, not than the next lowest or highest bidder. They only came in a few thousand dollars less than the next highest bidder. And what you said to me directly, and also into that microphone, was not that you wanted it to be bid and that there be savings, but you stated, and this is a recorded issue, that you thought that the way they did business was wrong. We agreed on that, because they meddled in an election, and therefore you and I agreed to vote against them. I was grateful that my council colleagues acknowledged that they had overstepped their bounds meddling in a local election, and it did not pass the first time. It did pass the second time with your vote and without mine, and I won't vote for them because I feel like, and I think West Orange residents deserve that, I feel like we should do business with people that are fair, that are honorable, and that are not meddling in the election when they certainly have a no-bid contract, which is what they had at that time. So I'll let that stand as my correction to the record. Thank you.
Council President, I will reply for the record. I have said, and it is recorded, yes, I will eat crow if they are put out to bid and they come in lower. They came in lower for their retiree health benefits, because we had that discussion. That was a million dollar savings. When they went out to bid, they came in lower. I will do, as I, I'm still talking.
I, I know.
Okay, then you need to not interrupt me. No, you don't have to. I let you finish talking, and Council President, I would ask that you please. Thank you.
Just kind of finish.
Absolutely. So there is no, nothing to clarify. What I said was absolutely correct, and I said, in fact, verbatim, if they come in at a lower bid, I will eat crow and move the motion myself. That's what I have said. I really don't understand what this is from your, your direction this way, but I am not going to continue to ignore the way that you addressed me. You talk, you stare at me, I'm not intimidated by you, if that's the intent, and whatever it is that you want to try and mince words or twist words, yes, it is on record, and yes, I did say, I would move it, I would eat crow publicly, and I would support it if they became competitive, and they have been competitive.
Want to add, Council President?
Okay. Yes, we're going to end this conversation. No, we're going to end this conversation.
This isn't about Councilwoman Brown. I found it, and I stated at the time, very interesting that Fairview, when they had a challenge on the council, would find miraculously a million dollars in savings, and then find, and after they had lost one vote, found another million. I, I, I think that that is much too coincidental to actually be coincidence, which is why I continue to vote no.
Okay, good. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 305-22?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. 306-22, resolution authorizing maritime health for employees' coverage, third-party administration services. Councilman Rutherford?
For the same reasoning, we can, unless you guys want to debate it, we can vote.
We found out that they were a broker, they went out and found zero increases. I'm okay with that.
Is there a motion to approve 306-22?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
307-22, resolution authorizing an agreement to enter into a contract for employees' prescription drugs with Benicard Services, Inc.
Same.
Yeah, I just want to add to the conversation. I wasn't going to, but I, I can't help myself. I understand everyone's frustration. I was frustrated myself when this came up last year. I was glad we went to bid, but the thing that did it for me, and, and still does, is by talking to our, her staff, who actually utilizes the services, and they can't say enough about the services that they receive from the vendor, so it was an easier pill for me to swallow. But I hear you, I hear both your frustration, but that's, you know, that's what helps me along, that they're, you know, the claims are done quickly, they're efficient, and they're, they're very happy with the services, which is important, especially when, you know, you're, you're going for your medical care. So with that, I'm just going to wrap that comment up, but I'm a, I'm a yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 307-22?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Because they continue to make political donations in West Orange, my vote is no.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
308-22, resolution authorizing an agreement with Liberty Mutual Insurance Company for stop-loss coverage for year 2023.
I will say, Council President, and when I spoke with Mr. Gross earlier about this, this one was difficult for me to actually vote no against, I'm voting no on principle, because Liberty Mutual certainly does have a very compelling offer here, and it will certainly save the township some money. And so it, it was a conversation we had, but nevertheless, based on the same principles already discussed, I'm still a no vote, and I'm happy to take the vote.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 308-22?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading. Bond ordinance funding and emergency appropriation providing for the local unit's allocable share of the unfunded portion of Phase 1 of the flood mitigation facilities project at the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, appropriating $2,725,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,725,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments or questions on this ordinance from the joint meeting? Seeing none. Councilman, any updates or anything?
No, just that the joint meeting continues to provide an impeccable service, and they, you know, we talked about the budget at the last council meeting, and Mr. Gross spoke to this earlier in the council meeting as well. Inflation continues to be an issue, getting access to the same materials as last year, at the same price or similar is virtually impossible. But in spite of that, and in spite of the delays, this project moves forward, and it will certainly ensure that if we have another Hurricane Ida-type event, we will all be able to flush our toilets and still, and still take showers.
Which many cannot, yes.
All right, listen, if you go multiple days without that ability, it's, you know, right, so.
All right, make a motion?
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, do you, oh, no, I asked, no comments?
She already asked, right?
I asked.
Yeah, she did ask. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, zoom, zoom.
Yeah, zoom, zoom, zoom. Forgot about the zoomers.
Are there any members of the public wishing to comment? Council President, I'm seeing none.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2698-22 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2699-22, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a license agreement with Pleasant Valley Productions, Inc., for use and operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Do it again. Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments or questions on the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center?
Any member of the public wishing to comment on 2699-22, kindly raise your hand at this time. Council President, I'm seeing none.
Great, good. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2699-22?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes, and we look forward to a great season.
Ordinances on first reading, 2700-22, bond ordinance providing for the installation of a sanitary sewage system and associated laterals located on Mellon Avenue between Cleveland Terrace and Kitchener Avenue, appropriating $285,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $271,400 bonds or notes of the township to finance the part of the cost thereof, and directing a portion of special assessment of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Gross on this. So with the cost, I remember this little couple houses that are up behind Cleveland Terrace, is, it says special assessment, so are the residents getting?
The, there, there are a number of property owners that are impacted, who will now have sewer service, they will, this is a special assessment.
On them, right.
On them. Part of it, and, and quite frankly, we own a couple of lots up there, so there, the, we will be assessing ourselves a portion of that. So most of this, or at least, at least half of this money will be coming back to us through special assessments from other property owners.
That's how I remembered it. Okay.
And, and this is an expansion, the origi, the original ordinance, again, based on the hurricane damage and other factors, once we got into the project, realized that, that it was not, we weren't going to be able to accomplish it for the original amount, so this, this, more than half of this has already been authorized, so this is just amending for the rest of the job.
So this whole amount isn't assessed, because some of it was our expenses?
I'm sorry.
So this whole amount, it wasn't the whole amount, it was like half?
This is a whole, this whole amount will be assessed, it's just some of it will be assessed against the township.
To us, okay. You answered it. Next.
Okay. Ordinance 2701-22, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic, subsection 7-32.1, handicap parking on streets, and subsection 7-32.2, restrictive parking zones of the revised general ordinances. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
I believe we were going to have a discussion about continuing with Zoom and the cost thereof?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to, to bring to the council's attention, as you know, we have been doing simultaneous Zoom and since, over the past few months. And as, in addition to that, every, many of our citizen boards who have, have been still appearing by Zoom and not meeting in person since, since the pandemic, now that was paid for initially through COVID monies that we received to allow us to do that, but those funds are no longer available. So as we prepare for the 2023 budget, it's, it's, it's an important decision to be made as to whether or not we're going to continue this. The, the debate over that certainly is, is at, at, at your level. For us, it's a financial one. For, for, for instance, the, the planning board, zoning board, rent leveling board, for argument's sake, it's roughly $5,000 per board that has cost us for that.
Per year?
Per year. So it's not an insignificant cost. Having said that, it may be a decision that you, that council says it's, 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 it's still necessary, or you may make a determination that we've got to a point where every, all the boards should be going back live and not operating just virtually. This board is not, is doing both and, and, and we will be experiencing next year costs that we have not experienced in the past in the same realm. We're, we're currently, or next year, we'll be paying for not only a video operator, but a moderator as well. And so that, that's a cost that, that we need to budget for, which we've never budgeted for in the past. So it's, it's, it's a topic that I bring to your attention for debate, whether it be settled tonight or whenever, it is certainly something that, that needs to be addressed.
Are you tracking the attendance at all the meetings to see how many members of the audience you have?
I can't speak for, for the other boards because they're just meeting, they're not meeting physically, so if, except they're having a meeting, it's all virtual. You know, you know the experience here in terms of, of the, now, now, I, that, that does not mean that we would not necessarily have to give up the idea of streaming. Streaming may be something that we could do and we, we've had some preliminary discussions about maybe doing that without a moderator, because if you don't have a back and forth, if you don't have the, the, the question and answer back and forth and you don't, I, I believe, I can't say for certainty, but pretty sure that we could do that without a moderator, if we're just doing a streaming type situation. So that might be something as an alternative that we could stretch for if you decided to, to eliminate the, the, the moderation of it. The moderator is where the cost is and, and so that, that really is the decision.
Do we, do we have a price range per hour for a moderator?
Well, it's basically four, the total cost is somewhere around $400 per meeting. Yeah. So, which is what we pay for video here and that's what we will pay for, you know.
A moderator.
That's what goes through the winter.
Is the, is the TV station back up, up over at the high school?
I don't believe it is.
I don't believe it in that.
But again, that's, that's outside of our control.
No, I know, I was just saying that.
Now, having said that, our meetings are still going to be up on, on our website for people to download with, within 24, 48 hours, just like they normally are.
Actually, there, I was asked to make an announcement that this particular meeting will be delayed because of the holiday.
Okay.
So, yeah, just so people understand that.
But again, and I, I do think that we, you know, we, we could, we can look at this concept, if you like, of, of doing, you know, live streaming, but without the interaction. Because the interaction is where the cost is.
I know.
And, you know, you know, and, and value that as you, as you would. It, it, it's, it's, it's a lot of expense for, I don't know, you know, you, you know better what the volume is.
I, I think, I think two things, Council President. One, I don't know that we'll ever be able to get away from having a virtual option anymore. I think that's just the way of the world. But I also think it is probably better to have the new council debate it because they're going to have to approve the funding for it. So, you know, I think philosophically, you know, we can weigh in on how we think, but I think from a practical matter, getting it done, we're going to need the two new council members to be seated to have a, a robust conversation.
Reason that I, I, the reason I bring it up tonight, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but we're getting inquiries from planning board, board, board adjustment, grant leveling board about scheduling January meetings and whether or not, and what we're going to go with that. So that's, you know, where we are. And, and again, we've, from, from the administration's point of view, we're, you know, we haven't had, we haven't had any discussions about where it's going to be moving forward until, until we do have those discussions, but.
I like to make a correction.
Certainly something, you, you know, to be honest with you, I think, I think the council needs to take the lead on this. If the, if the council makes a determination, it's, it's going to be, to, to, to continue to use, to have a, an interactive option, you're hard pressed not to tell the other boards and committees. I think that, that they can't have that too and, and that may expand into other ones that haven't, have not tried. So, you know, you, from a budgetary point of view, you're talking about that $5,000 a year times X, how many different boards and committees. For us, it's 10. It's 10 that, because we have two meetings a month. The, the others generally have one. So, so it, it is, it is going to geometrically add up. And again, that, 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 that's a value decision for you to make. And what I will tell you is, as I've told you before, is going to be a, a difficult budget year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the next few years are going to be difficult, or at least two, two. But philosophically, I think, and I, I'm happy to hear your thoughts, but I think it's going to be very difficult to get away from providing a virtual option.
Well, the real question is, I thi, I think the real trust is going to be whether or not you're going to have-
A moderator.
-interaction.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, question, Q and A or question and answers or comments publicly. And that's not to say that we couldn't figure out another way to, for the public to have, to submit questions. We've talked about alternatives before, we've kind of thought not of them as far as email and things of that nature, but we can continue to investigate other alternatives.
Well, other townships do allow questions to be sent in to the clerk and then they get read and the council can respond.
I think we could figure out other alternatives, you, you know, other than that, if that's the direction that you go in. And still, I think we still can do live stream, but it just won't be interaction. And I don't think the live stream would cost us anything. So I think that's just a, basically, you, you get it started and they feed off of, off of our, our, our audio that we have and, or video that we have. And, you know, with it, if you don't have to worry about, you know, the, the back and forth of, of who's in the audience and who wants to talk and bringing them in and, you know, changing them around. That's where the moderator comes in and it's absolutely essential if you're doing that. If we're not doing that, then you don't need a moderator and you don't need the expense.
Well, I, I hear you and I, I think there has to be some conversation about cost benefit. I, I will say I have noticed, and, and this is anecdotal, so it'd be good to be backed by data, fewer commenters from Zoom, you know, over the last two years. When we first started, obviously it was all on Zoom, but then as we got into a dual component or a hybrid fashion, we've seen less and less commenters. This is a different week, it's a holiday, so I wouldn't expect many commenters, but.
Election's over. Just saying.
Yeah, so, you know, but I, I think data will help drive that too, if we could have some data around attendance, number of public commenters over the course of time.
Everybody here knows what the, the volume is, we've all experienced it. So anecdotally, yourself, you know what it are.
It's gone down.
So to the extent that, that, if I'm right, that, that the council lead is where this is going to go for, for the other boards and councils, it comes back to you. And I mean, we can do that, we can go through and we can tally it up, but you all know.
Yeah, I, I-
And I'm not trying to be disparaging about that.
I know.
The, the, the numbers are, are, are what they are.
Well, I mean, I brought it up, so I didn't take it that in a negative at all. I, I, I think though, if we were to make that kind of a move without giving some opportunity for the public to comment, I think that would be a mistake too.
I think it's here to stay, Councilman. I, I agree with you. I think the virtual, I think the virtual option is here to stay. I think it became convenient, we heard that in early on from parents that couldn't get out, you know, or their home with their children or whatever their reason was, even illnesses. So I think that is here to stay, but the idea of submitting a question and then the clerk can disseminate that to the council members could be an option as well.
That, that actually, Council President, is a little concerning to me because I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we're getting emails from Madam Clerk with changes often. I think that that would open up a space for, you know, a message to be missed or, you know, and then, then the growing distrust with public saying, oh, she didn't read my, you know, email and even if Madam Clerk says, oh, I didn't receive it because genuinely she was preoccupied with getting ready for the council meeting, that, that might cause some trouble. I, I do agree that, you know, the streaming, virtual access is something that is beneficial to so many, but we have gotten back into real everyday life. The board meetings, I know at the school board, they no longer, they were streaming, but they no longer do that. And I haven't heard too much, you know, complaints about that. I, while to me, clearly I'm not on the council next year, but I think it's a minimal expense, but I also see the fact that we are getting back to living regular lives. And if it's somewhere we can save, you know, however insignificant, you know, I'd rather not have it than just stream. I mean, streaming, they can watch it on Thursday.
Yeah, and, and any alternate way of people submitting, we would vet that and if it wasn't workable, we, you know, we, but my point is, is that we can look at that, you know, we can, we can look at other technologies, we can look at other ways to do it. I, you know, you know, if we, if, if we're charged with finding a way to do it, we're pretty creative, you know, but it's just a matter of, of, of what, you know, if, if you say, if the council says that's the direction you want to go in, then we'll go in that direction.
Figure out how to do it, right?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Castellino, I know you said you had a recommendation.
Yeah, so I would recommend that, you know, we, we, and we'll have to do it tonight because I know we have a hearing, but we should give a, a decision and not wait into next year only because all the, well, especially you as the new mayor, you'll be looking at appointments for the planning board, there's all of us, you know, and new, and new people coming in, there's going to be a lot of new appointments come January, and I think those appointees should know what they're walking into. Are they walking into Zoom meetings? Are they walking into, they have to be in council chambers for their meetings? And I think that will help them to decide if they're going to commit or not, because again, it's about the commitment and if they could come. But I also think with the holidays approaching, with COVID still out there a little bit and people getting sick on and off, that you at least take this through the end of January and that, you know, everybody should be, especially after the holidays when people are all gathering together in case people are sick and it's not spreading, or, you know, just, or just have a set date. And, but whatever we decide, maybe think about it, talk to the people on the boards. Because what I'm hearing from people serving on the other boards is a lot of them do want to come in person because you do lose that in-person feel, like, you know, like you're zoning out on the computer and sometimes you can't really see or, especially when it comes to like the planning and the zoning boards where there's a lot of paperwork that they have to look at and it is, you know, you get more out of that in-person presentation because I know we all feel that coming here in person. So I think we should just, you know, think about it and, and talk about it at the next meeting and make a decision because these appointees are going to have to make a commitment and we should let them know what that commitment is.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, kind of give them some clarity through at least the early part of next year. We can figure it out what the long term is after that.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So I guess put this on for pending matters next meeting?
Next meeting.
So we get it done.
Do you want me to list that under pending matter?
Yeah, sure.
All right, and now, okay, so we have an ABC hearing, so.
Okay.
Council President, I may, I just need to address something Councilwoman Matute Brown said a moment ago.
Can we just say Happy Thanksgiving and adjourn as council?
Please, Council President, I think I'm a reasonable individual and I'm a council person and, and here we go. Like it's, I'm the problem, but you're the one talking.
Okay, how about if you do that offline?
No, 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 because it's on the record.
I really don't, I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm, I think it is important that West Orange know that I've not sought to intimidate you or anyone else. And when I look at you when I'm talking, it's because I'm trying my best to maintain decorum and not mention you by name.
Okay, good.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman.
But now you want to respond.
That's right, that's right.
Of course you do.
That's right, because you want to let, let everyone know that you practice decorum.
I do.
That's why, that's why you point at me, you try to look at me and stare me down up here and intimidate me.
Okay, I mean, you can characterize how you like.
I am far from that. It is, I am far from that. The elections are over.
Yep, they are.
You're here to govern.
We have a hearing, we have a hearing.